For the budget, Dr. Tom Deichel will present. Thank you.
Thank you. I've never had this many people here for a budget hearing. Wow, this is great. What I want to show you is our budget is a two-year, biannual budget in the state. And these are some of the changes. This is the first year of our true new budget. So we're going to see a 2.5% increase in education for 2020 and 2021. We're going to see a reduction in our teacher retirement. The rate that we have to pay will drop from 7.5% to 5.5%. Feature appreciation grant increased from $30 million to $37.5 million. The ELL funding increased by $5 million from $7.5 to $22.5. There's a new referendum that schools can do, and that's approved for up to $10 cents for $100 of assessed valuation. It's a school safety referendum. There's also an increase in school bus safety issues because of the number of cars that still continue to go around buses when their stop alarms are out, which is really dangerous for all of our students in the country. Secured school grant increased from $9 million to $99. Now have to have a public hearing on certified negotiations regarding the salaries and benefits of our teaching staff. The maximum that we can transfer from our education fund to the operations fund is 15%. And special ed preschool funding was increased by $125 in both years. The preschool fund was created back in the 90s, and they said it was like $5,500 to educate a 13-year-old or a 5-year-old to pursue special ed in the mid-'90s. So the state, their infinite wisdom, said, okay, it's a half-day program, so we're going to give you $27.50. And it's been $27.50 ever since, and it's like they finally increased it after all these years. In the tuition support, this is how we get our money in our operation, our educational fund. In 2019, for the basic tuition support, we were getting $5,352 per student. In 2020, it'll go up $196, $5,538. In 2021, it'll go up another $155 to $5,703. We also get what's called a complexity index, and that's based on our free reduced lunch applications, how many children we have on their tariff and stamp and things of that nature. So in 2019, we received another $35.39 per student, and then in 2020, it'll go up $111, and then in 2021, it'll be up $25. In the education fund, this is our estimated revenue, and this is a 99% of it is basically state tuition support, so it's based on how many students we give in. So you can see we're advertising, looking at $69.8 million in state support, and then the other ones are all tiny little things that we get. So we're going up about $1.1 million in total in education revenue. And then the education expenses, when you look at those, I'm sorry it's so small, but there's so many different categories, I have to put them all up there. I just go to the total, go to the next one, it's bigger. You'll see in '19, we were at $64 million, and we're projecting $66.9, so about a $2.6 million increase in that education fund. In the debt service fund, and the next funds are all based on property taxes, bank excise, commercial vehicle excise, tax. So the property taxes for the debt service fund went down $2.3 million. We had to make up some cash balances in our property tax service fund. So you're seeing about a $2.3 million reduction in debt service. In the estimated expenditures, we're actually about $150,000 less in estimated expenditures, $13.5, $13.4. In the pension fund, corrections going up about $500,000, and we had to pick up some additional cash from our operating balance there, so that's why that's going up. And then in the pension debt, it's coming down $3,000, $1,270 to $1,267. The operation fund now, the operation fund is a combined capital projects, transportation, bus replacement fund. So we combine all of those, and it's made up property, excise, student, financial institution, local option income tax, those are the major ones. So we're actually going up about $1,007 in property, going up $1,000 in excise tax, and about $100,000 in CBIT, and that's when we're all minors. So we're looking at about full fund, $2 million total in the operation fund, and these are all projected. In the operation fund expenditures, we look at those. So you have technology, you have central office, people are here, you have transportation, you have the studio maintenance. So you can see the first four categories are all those people that I mentioned. $41,000, I put $1 million there for land, even though we have $1 million in proposed bond, we should all start with land. I just don't know what land is going for right now, how many acres we're going to need to buy in the future, but we need to look at purchasing land sometime soon for some future expansion. Professional services went up a little bit, building acquisition went up about $1.5 million. Skill craft employees went up a little bit. So overall, we're looking at about a $4 million increase. Again, that's projected, it won't be that high. Now, one of the new things, since we got rid of bus replacements, we still have to show what the number of buses we're going to purchase over the next five years. So in 2020, we're looking at need buses at about $125,000 apiece for buses. 2021, five buses. 2022, 10 buses. And then 2023, 24. Those numbers are just going to change depending on the condition of some of our vehicles. And we also still have to do a capital projects list, so we put maintenance vehicles in there for $250,000, computer library replacements for $100, phone works for $250,000, internet filters for $3,000. It doesn't make sense to me, it's all part of the operations fund, we still have bus replacement, we still have capital projects. In the rainy day fund, I'm asking them to transfer up to $1 million if necessary, hopefully we don't need it this year. That's basically the budget itself. Now, I just wanted, the next slide shows you the assessed value, how our A.D. has been going. I went all the way back to 2009, we were at $0.03, $100 of assessed valuation. You can see the percent increase or decrease from 2012 through 2014 on assessed valuation, which is the well, the school was actually increased. And then starting in 2015, we started to increase from $2.6, $3.7, $4.7, $9.6. You can see our assessed valuation is $2.7, $28 million now. One of the major things I would refer to schools is the tax cap loss. Now, you're not supposed to pay more than 1% on your assessed valuation of your home. So that was all covered into the constitution. I voted for it, I didn't want to be a morning one either. So you can see from 2010 through 2015, Clark County as a whole lost $51, almost $52 million. Greater Clark lost $4 million, and they'll never get that money back. Then in '16, '17, '18, '19, I showed those individually, how much money we lose, how much Clark County has lost. So since 2010, and this went into the state constitution, Clark County has lost $119 million in property taxes. Greater Clark has lost almost $24 million. That's a big, very big lose. Now, this is the expected appropriations, and I always show this to you. The education fund for 2019, we're at $64.2 million. We're advertising $66.9, I think we'll be somewhere on $65.850 once everything falls through. We will see an increase in about $1.5 million. In debt service, we advertised, I'm sorry, we approved $13.4 in '19. We advertised $13.24 in '20, should be right at $13.24. Pension, we approved for $1,270. We advertised $1,267, that's where we should be. In the operations fund, '19, we were paid for $22.2 million. We advertised $29.7, and we expect it to be about $23.4. So it'll probably be about a $1.2 million increase over this year. And the rainy day fund is a million. So in 2019, our whole budget was $102.2 million. We're advertising $112, we'll be somewhere around $125. So we're about $2.7 million increase. Now, the next one is the expected tax movies. This is the property taxes that we're looking to collect. In the education fund, it's also gross, because it's all state tuition support, and the debt service fund, for '19, $16.3 million. For '20, we're looking at $14 million. Advertise, and we think it'll be about $30.855. The expected is all based on where our assessed valuations are. As of today, Clark County still has not posted their assessed valuation for anybody in Clark County. I'm still waiting for those numbers. In the debt service fund, so the pension debt, we have to approve for $1.1 million. We advertise $1.6, we'll probably be around $1.4 million. An increase of about $3.27 million in the operations fund. We're at $14.2, almost $3 million this year. We advertise $15.9, we should be around $1.3, so a little bit of an increase. Rainy day fund is all zeros, so you can see in '19, we approved $1.7. We advertise $31.6, we expect $29.6, so we're looking at a $2.1 million increase in our expected taxes. Now, the expected tax rates, this is what everybody's always interested in. Again, the education fund has no tax rates, because there's no tax levying. In debt service, we were approved for $0.58, we advertise $61, we'll probably be about $56. In the pension fund, we were approved for $4, we advertise $1.7, we should be around $5. In the operations fund, we approved $51, we advertise $69, we should be around $50. Rainy day fund is all zeros, and all said we done. We're at $113 for this year, we advertise at $37, we should be around $1.11. And we can do it all in half once we find out what we're going to do. Now, this is something, this is very simple and basic, how you can look at your tax rate. If you have a $2 billion assessed valuation, that's the law of your school district, and you have $25 million in property taxes you need to raise, your rate ends up being a dollar and quarter. Now, say your A.D. goes up to $2.5 billion, and you still need to pay $1 million in property taxes, your rate drops to a dollar. Now, say your A.D. is only, drops from $2 billion to $1.5 billion, and you still need $25 million in property tax, your rate jumps up to $1.66. So you can see how, just by adjusting your assessed valuation, how it really fluctuates your tax rate. Now, the next thing is near and dear to my heart, Clark County tax improvement plan in some districts. We have a lot of TIF districts, tax improvement by NC districts in Clark County. As of 12/31/17, the cash balance for all Clark County was $41.4 million, which turned up $6.5 million from December 31st of '16. A.D. that was captured during that same time period went from $432 million to $1 billion. Clark County ranks number four in the state in cash balances at $41.4 million. Allen County is number one at almost $80 million that they're sitting on in cash, that's taken away from schools and other taxing units. Now, that gives you the overall of Clark County. Now, just looking at Greater Clark, Perry Crossing, the bonds were paid off, the cash balance there is $960,000, which was an increase of $117,000. And Michigan took $1.3 million in assessed valuation. All this assessed valuation that they captured is not in Greater Clark's tax rate. If we're able to bring all that in, I have a slide that'll show you what our tax rate will drop if we're able to bring all that in. The Stale Road, A.D. captured is only $102,000, $985, they don't have a cash balance there. In Jeffersonville, you have TIF 57, which is ICR, is InterCity Road, assessed valuation, that's up and down the 10th Street, all that moved up on the 10th Street was $277.7 million. Their cash balance, December 31st of '18, was $15.2 million. Now, it was an increase of $886,000 compared to the year. TIF 62 is Harbor Falls, Longview, they didn't have any assessed valuation listed, their cash balance was $3.5 million. So they had an increase of $175,000. Both valid, $24.5 million A.D., cash balance $1.2 million. And so they had $146,000 of increase. The Alps are $27.4 million, they're sitting at $24 million. Keystone, assessed value is $24, we're sitting at $530,000, that's over $6.7. No cash balance, no increase, no increase. The higher interest, assessed valuation, so we're bringing in our schools, lower hard entry. Falls Landing, $70 million, cash balance is $137,000, so they're down $4,000. So all coaches in Jeffersonville, they're sitting at $415 million in assessed valuation, and they're taking it away from schools that we can't get our taxes. The cash balance that they're sitting on, December 31st of '18, was almost $23 million, and that's an increase of $1.5 million over line. In Charlestown, I showed the bonds that didn't get paid off, but I don't know how accurate that is, because I know they have active TIF districts there, but I'm just going by what's reported on the Ginnie and Gable system. Their cash balance, December 31st of '18, was $261,000, which is an increase of $189,000. And they captured and now released $26.6 million in assessed valuation. Here's the good analogies. Here, River Ridge, everybody thinks we're rolling in money because of all that growth that we're the rich. You've got to understand, before this River Ridge, it was an R.B. initial money. We were getting impact aid, and that dried up about two years ago. Our last payment was like $7,000 that we received from that. So we have a TIF district, create this area, and whatever that assessed valuation is at that point in time, that's the basic assessed valuation. Then the growth is called incremental, and that's what they use to get their money for all their projects, and we don't get any of that growth. So because it was federally owned land, the assessed valuation was zero. So now, they captured $26 million in TIF revenue in '18, their assessed value is $386 million. They generate $2.5 million in property taxes. And 15, the law, there's Indiana COVID, says schools may get up to 15% of your property taxes collected in TIF history. We've been trying over the years to change that one word, "may," to "should." All we're trying here, getting so much opposition from the cities and the towns and redevelopment commissions. So just on River Ridge alone, if we would have gotten 15%, we would have gotten an extra $383,000 in property taxes. Now, total assessed valuation, not recognized, for all these TIF districts, is $832 million. That's a chunk of money that we'd gained withheld from our property taxes. So, I did a little number crunching here, and this is what our tax rates could look like if we use 2019 information, so I'm looking at our current value of 2019, the current assessed valuation of $2.7, almost $2.7 billion, and our current tax rate, then I added in at $800 million. So you can see, in debt service, our tax rate was reduced from $0.58 to almost $0.45. The pension debt was over $0.04, $0.03. Operations fund, $0.51 to $0.39. Rainy day, nothing. Overall, $1.13 at $0.87, we have a $0.26 drop in our cash. Now, the next one, we can do better. This one shows you how much property taxes we could have collected if we had gotten 15%. So when you look at all the property taxes that we collected, say in 2018, for all the different TIF districts, with 17, up to $1 million, 15% would be $2.5 million. And the last slide, it shows, or the very bottom, shows how much we lost in property tax caps. So basically, if you look at, look at the next slide, in summary, the 15% for 2011, 2019, we lost $18.4 million. The tax cap loss, or we could have been, I should say, we could have been $18.4 million. The tax cap loss during that same time period was $18.7. So the net loss would be, we only lost $315,000 over that same time period, which is $18.7, if redevelopment commissions would have shared that 13% of us. So, the concern that I always have, if you're not aware of it, there's a public hearing tonight, and I think it started at 6:00 over at Martin Freud Energy, who's looking to raise rates by 23% or 75% in two years. You'd think it'd be like 7.5% for a year, now it's like 13% the first year and 30% the second year. So if that comes through, we're looking at about a $200,000 increase on our electricity bill, which is what I said. And look at your own households, look at your, I don't have my wife to shut the lights on. In TIF districts, Utica has added two yields, they haven't captured any assessed valuation yet, but that's going to come next. We have a lot of housing developments in our school district, that's scary. We've got five, right along across the street. And Charleston has a 11, potentially coming up in Charleston. Tax caps, that's always a concern. Statute of having that kind of thing, a lot of certified, non-certified, and we're also trying to have a competitive wage. We were offering $10 or $10.50 an hour, and we were fighting against McDonald's, who's offering $12 an hour in full benefits. You know, it is hard, and they're a poor property company, and we're not. We have to live within our budget, I can't raise the rates to anybody. So that's basically the budget presentation, our budget adoption, it'll be on October 15th. I won't move to all of this, it would be much harder and quicker, but I will be here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have one. Just to recap, I think I understood it, just to make it clear for the people out there, if the TIF districts had paid, given us the 15% they're allowed to, then we would have been at the position where you say on taxes, so property taxes would have been considerably lower on all these taxpayers.
Correct. Okay. I have a question, Tom. On those TIF districts that you showed that had a zero balance on paying back their bonds, they'd already paid all their bonds. I understand that they could continue to have obligations.
Correct.
So if, when we look at that, we can't assume that X number of million dollars is excess money, and you distribute it as we know, any way they want, they can give it all to us. But if they have obligations pending, they have to keep a certain amount of money. That's what I understand about the River Ridge, is they've got all these obligations pending.
Yeah, one of the new things in the law, question, two more you have to hit. One of the things in the law says that they now have to have an annual meeting. And I went to Nashville, because we have one school, Clark County, and I went to Jeff, and I went to Law, because I wanted to see what the other county would do. And the presentations were basically the same, you know, they talked about actually the different TIF districts that they had. Everything was sugarplums and fairy tales, it really was. I mean, they were talking about how well everything was with the TIF district, were they, were the city, were the county, the community. One thing they never talked about was the effect on public schools. How much money are you making away from public schools? The law that was passed this legislative session said that if you are a county with less than 100,000 people, and I call it Burt Crawford County, which is close to us, they're the poorest county in the state, which is what I'm understanding. If they had a housing room, and their county wanted to create a TIF district, they can create a TIF district and pick up all this residential property, and the school would get plenty of it. One of the things that they put in the law was, they had to give the public information as far as how the TIF district would affect the public school. Well, hello, both the cities and towns got together, and that was taken out of the law. So now they don't have to say that. And I think that's terrible, I think they should still have to talk about how TIF districts affect public schools. It's just getting harder and harder, I mean, we're getting hit constantly. Why isn't it allowed that city or county or redevelopment commission can take money away from the public school? We can't do it now, and they can do it from us. They have multiple ways of doing it. You know, they can give a maintenance to a business, you know, they can give a 10-year maintenance, so each year you're paying 10% of your own property taxes. So the first year you pay serious, second you pay 10, fourth you pay 100%. Then I heard they have a 20-year maintenance, which is a 20-year maintenance. And that's over 20 years of maintenance. So why do they need all these TIF districts? Hamilton County, okay, which is a very gritty school area, which is Hamilton South District, School District, has 101 TIF districts. At what point in time is enough enough? There needs to be controls on these TIF. I'm sorry, I'm getting on my game.
And Tom, it's true that Clarksville City actually does give us TIF on every year.
Yes, Clarksville has, we're in our second three-year agreement with the town, Clarksville, and we get $160,000 for technology. And Clarksville, the Indian schools, gets $240,000. So they give us $400,000 out of their TIF district. Remember, they're pulling in about $7.5 million every year of the property taxes. So, Tom, could you go? Jeffersonville also gets this money. Could you explain that? Oh, yeah. When they expanded the Penn Street TIF district, we had negotiated with the redevelopment commission and the mayor that we would give up to 10% of $400,000 over the life of that TIF district. We finally got our first payment on property taxes this June, we got $4,648 or something like that. So it's a far cry from the $400,000 that we're saying we're giving, that may be 15, 10 years down the road before we see that, and I'll be long gone. Get to it.
I have one other question. If district, TIF districts were to be able to give us, or choose to give us the money to reduce our tax rates, and it also, because of what they take out, it reduces the money that we are able to collect off property taxes. The same thing happened, I believe you mentioned, the same thing happens with the county. So the county doesn't, for county roads, county services, they have to provide, they lose money as well, correct?
Correct.
And, but the county also, Indiana has enabled the county to be able to collect a occupational tax too, which the schools can't do, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the county loses money, but the county can make it back up by taking money from your paycheck. We can't do that. Another thing I wanted to make.
Yes, I wanted to see if you could clarify for me, on the tax rate that you projected, so right now our tax rate's $1.1363. You projected in 2020, that would be $1.1170. Does that include the bonds that we're being asked to approve tonight?
Yes, it does. But if, and I think it would be even lower, because I think our assessed valuation will go up, because I really wasn't projecting much of an increase in assessed valuation. So that will drop.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, the public hearing for the budget is adjourned. And we're going to call the board meeting for tonight, October 1st. He will show that all board members are present, we should tell me that. Do everyone could stand a little slightly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, actually, agenda, you guys were so good on the way through that, even you guys look forward to when you grow up.
And there's going to be a quiz. Did they not tell you that?
You can't go home until you have to. Ms. Wesley is here to present board salute to the elementary cross-country national and American champions.
Thank you, I guess the best part of the night. So we've got Coach Daniel Dietrich, and is Dr. Sharman here? Come on up. We've got quite a list of athletes tonight who have been helping the five students. Okay, here we go. Congratulations to the Jonathan Jennings Elementary Boys and Girls, total blue and white, total four teams, cross-country teams, for winning both the national and American divisions at the district cross-country meet held at Utica Elementary on Wednesday, September 11. The teams are coached by Daniel Dietrich. The JJ Boys Blue Team members include, and you can come on up when we call your name, Ivan Garcia, Trey Smith, Cameron Reed, Christian Grayson, Caleb Hawkins, Aiden Hawkins, Colin Parrish, Stone Loxton, Carter Streets, Danny Soliday, Logan Calvert. Logan Calvert, Brayden Ward, Kevin Chavez, and Thaddeus Dietrich. Come on up. That's the Boys Blue Team. And let's go ahead and add the Boys White Team, and we'll take that photo and then do the Girls Groups, okay? JJ Boys White Team members include Cameron Lee, Josh White, Ben Fowler, Jackson Brody, Cash Richardson, Jacob Orr, Blake Thacker, Andrew DeMatos, Trevor Brannum, Landon Cunkler, Dallas Kane, Jonathan Gaddis II, and Alexander Rodriguez. Thank you, gentlemen.
Let me say congratulations to these guys. I know what dedication it takes to get out there and run, especially in this heat here lately. So good work, guys, good work.
All right, now it's time to honor the Girls Groups. The JJ Girls Blue Team members include Ella Jones, Ella Shaw, Alexis Fincham, Vanessa Isabel Clark, Haley Holbrook, Leila Hammond, Bailey McIntosh, Skylar Sarnowski, Giata Hutchinson, Zoe Guthright, Peyton Emily, Haley Harris, and Mallory LeFoux, the Boys, the Girls Blue Team. Finally, the Girls White Team. Members include Chesney Jackson, Kirsten Barron, Claire Forsy, Gillian Solberg, Kaya Sanders, Izzy Combs, Kate Combs, Sophie Twig, Arabella Blunder, Chastity Brayden, Taylor Abbey, Kylie Thacker, and Addison Virchell. Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies and coaches, thank you for the time.
All right, the next round of the agenda.
I'm Matt Jarrett, I'm with the Republican Party.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick.
I actually do have a comment. Please, please, please do not ever put 26 action items on one board meeting agenda or agenda. Please, it's overwhelming out there, there are things I'm actually gonna have to vote against tonight because I didn't even have a chance to look at them.
Hi, Dave. Any other questions? All those in favor of related events, have had a busy public thing night. Next, I am on the agenda, as the people also have been permitted from previous meetings do an executive session regular meeting with public hearing and executive session regular to scan public hearings. Do I have a question? Thank you, Jonathan Jones. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Questions, comments on the meeting? All the paper, or means the minutes, as the minutes signify by saying hi. Public comments on agenda items. We do have a few people who are here to speak. I'd like to remind everyone that when you approach the podium, please say your name and state your address. At that time, a three-minute timer will start. You will be given a 30-second warning. At the 30 seconds, because of the length of the agenda's running and the number of people we have speaking, you will be cut off at three minutes. It's about least favorite job. But I don't, I, so you'll be cut off at three minutes. And the first person to speak is Stephanie Kinder.
Stephanie Kinder, 52 Tunnel Mill Road, Charleston, Indiana, 47111. My name is Stephanie Kinder and I'm a New Washington Elementary School parent and more importantly, a parent to a special needs child who benefited greatly from every school program for the last two years. She is now achieving in kindergarten, academically prepared and emotionally and socially adapted to her environment in spite of her autism diagnosis. The Certified Special Ed Teachers in paracels are the highly trained individuals who have made all the difference in the world to our daughter and our family. I want this experience for all special needs and neurotypical children. Under the new proposal, this team of professionals will be reduced to four Certified Special Ed Teachers for the entire district. The other eight programs will be headed by Classified Child Development Associates, not licensed teachers. The number of paracels will be reduced to one per program and two per program with special education. All this information was made public at the Strategic Planning Committee Public Forum. Superintendent Lawner would not guarantee that New Washington would be one of those special education programs, but rather would share a Special Ed Teacher with Charleston. And if the New Washington Preschool Special Needs Children would likely have to be bused to Charleston. This is unacceptable. These children will be missing out on class time and time with their neurotypical peers and socially starting over for kindergarten at their actual district school. Special Ed teachers are trained to identify those children who have not yet been diagnosed with learning or cognitive disorders. Without these specific teachers, more children may fall through the cracks. I'm deeply concerned that hiring these non-certified educators may be a cost-cutting measure that will have a ripple effect, in particular, comparing these students for the rigors of kindergarten, especially the special needs children. I'll be briefly discuss the other portion of the proposal, the cost. As a fiscal conservative, I understand how important it is to balance a budget and go without in order to make ends meet. With that said, under the new proposal, preschool will cost families $150 a week or $600 a month. While I know that many families use daycare and already experience these kind of expenses, many families like mine have a dedicated parent who's raising their children for $0. $600 is a major increase to anyone's budget. While Superintendent Lawner assured me that special needs children do not incur this cost, this is unaffordable to many families who do not qualify for reduced tuition. Preschool is not a daycare. Our daughter, in spite of her special needs, learned the fundamentals of early learning from a team of highly trained individuals who may not have positions by fall next year. Every child deserves a high-quality and affordable education experience that meets their unique needs. I hope you, the school board, believe that GCCS is youngish children, especially the special needs children, deserve better than this proposal. I urge you to vote no to these preschool program proposals and find another way to save money that doesn't involve reducing special education. The cost of keeping a Certified Ed, Special Ed Teacher in every preschool across the district should not hinder a child's opportunity to receive the necessary services to help them achieve their highest potential in preschool. That is the value worthy of standing behind.
The next person to speak is Madison Mivore.
Madison Mivore, 708 Spinox Drive, Hiddenville, Indiana, 47126. Hello, good evening. I'm currently a sophomore at Charleston High School. I've taken band classes since the sixth grade. And my interest for that, those classes have come from the musical classes that you currently have at the elementary school. I've had various teachers over the years, each one that was certified in that specific area, and they have all had one thing in common, which is a drive to teach musical theory to students. It is to my best understanding that if this plan is to pass, any person with an associate's degree would be allowed to teach related arts areas in elementary schools. They will be given a lesson plan from a Certified Teacher in that area, but beyond that, they are left on their own. Yes, these plans can be very well-written, very organized, and yet it is one thing to teach as a career and another to teach as a job. These classes are also a big influence on children. Elementary school is a six-year-long transition into full-time education. The seven-hour-long academic schedule can be tiring on young students. They do receive recess, but even that time can be limited. Related arts classes are a way for students to release energy and creativity in a structured way. Not only are they learning, they are having fun. Without the teachers who are certified in these areas with the desire to teach students those subjects, students will lose an interest in those subjects. If the teacher doesn't like the subject, neither will the students. And as a district, we pride ourselves in providing the best education to all students. Arts and technology are part of a well-rounded education. Why would we save money in strong educational programs and invest more in programs that do not benefit the students or their future education? Teachers who work in the current related arts positions have pursued this career their whole lives. Ripping them away from their beloved position and placing them in another is damaging to their life's work and livelihood. It is the goal of these educators to teach kids their passion. It is unfair to treat their jobs like an expense and not as vitally important as the classroom teachers. I care deeply for the future of Greater Clark and its students. As you vote on this plan, I ask you to think of the students like me who are influenced by the caring and support of teachers you have now. To think of the students who will lose value in these classes, without anyone to teach the appreciation of them, to not place the monetary value of creation or imagination. Thank you.
Next to speak is Eric Morris. Do you want to state your name and address?
So my name is Eric Morris. I live at 7117, Oak Street Row 3, in Otzco, Indiana. And I'm here in support of the facilities agenda because we specifically moved our kids from, New Washington, actually, to Charleston for the, for certain programs. I'm a sales guy, and to me, what we're doing is we're not utilizing all the things we've been given as tools to sell this corporation. We've done the athletics programs and the pride and everything else for our academics. I feel like we're failing our students as far as athletics. I'm so happy that 40 years ago, the members that were sitting here voted yes for the athletics programs because the leechers, the football field, and all of, all the schools, that's what they were built. So if we don't continue to support all these young people that just got their pictures taken in athletics, they're gonna go to surrounding schools. I apologize, I don't know your name, Tom. So Tom just mentioned of all of the housing boom that's basically coming to Greater Clark. I'm in the construction industry, that's what I do for a living, so I love to see it. I'm also on the planning commission board, on the homeowners board. So I see all the homes that are coming to our area. Me, I think we've done a fantastic job as far as education for our children. My son, my son is at Charleston High School. He's in all honors classes, particularly death, he's on the, on the programs that go off and place. My daughter's in seventh grade, little four, at Charleston Elementary School. With the homes that's coming in to our area, approximately 1,500 right now, that's already been planted, at an average of $300,000 a piece, it's $450 million that's coming to our area just in home sales. With 1.9 children per home as a U.S. national average, you're bringing 1,900 more students to this area. I would use the athletic facilities, again, we've already done a great job on the education part of it. I would use the athletic facilities as a sales tool to drive those kids a thousand homes from Salem Noble back to Charleston. They're either gonna go here, or they're gonna go to West Park, or they're gonna go to private school, which we've already lost several, several kids to. To Foyt County, to Foyt Central, St. X, we're losing kids. And I think it's just four, and it's great academics we're losing on athletics. Thank you.
Next to speak is Bender. Do you want to state your name and your address?
My name is Scott Bender. Address is 7612 Hidden River Trace, Charleston, Indiana. We are here in favor of the facilities plan for Charleston High School and actually for Jefferson High School as well. We, my wife and I, Jennifer, we are not from this area originally, so we are kind of the demographic, I think, Greater Clark is looking for potentially with what Eric said, with people moving into this area. You know, when we finished college, that's why we came to Southern Indiana, and we chose to stay in Southern Indiana after college. And so we did a lot of research where we were gonna buy a home at. We looked at the schools, we looked at various things. So once we bought a house, then we chose to have children. When it was time to start elementary school, again, we did a lot of research. We wanted to know, you know, what the schools had to offer, mostly academically, but also athletically. Now, at that point in elementary, we chose to go a different direction because there was a lot of turmoil going on within Greater Clark. And so we chose to take the private route. We went to St. Paul and Silver Creek, at Silver Creek, Indiana. But when they became, you know, they should go to junior high, we chose to come to Greater Clark. Again, we did research, we liked what we saw, we heard a lot of great things, not only from the people who were in the school at that time, but also teachers who were at other schools outside of the districts had a lot of good things to say about Greater Clark and more specifically Charleston. So we moved our son, who's a sophomore in high school, to the middle school at that time. Now, as Eric pointed out previously, we didn't have to come to Charleston. We didn't have to come to Greater Clark. You know, we had several of our friends who were at, at St. Paul who either went to Providence, or they went to Silver Creek, or they went to Highland Hills, or, you know, various schools outside of this district. But again, because Charleston, we felt like academically had made progress, and then also the facilities at that time, you know, we had the new, we had had the addition onto the high school, plus we had, you know, the facilities for the baseball field and softball field had just been finished. So in our opinion, that was very nice, and that was something, you know, that we want to be a part of. Now, as Eric said, we have an opportunity in this county and in this school corporation for all these houses that are being built to keep those people in Greater Clark. But if you look at some of our facilities that haven't been touched for 30 and 40 years at both Charleston and Jefferson High School, it's an eyesore, to be quite honest. And there's definitely things that, you know, we can fix with this facilities plan. And I can't stand up here and tell you that, you know, my son's gonna have a horrible career, my daughter's gonna have a horrible career, if they don't have these things. But I can tell you that if you think that people don't look at those things when they come and put their children in schools, then you're kidding yourself and you're misguided in that. So I appreciate your time and I hope that you would look into what we presented on our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Next speaker is Tom Finley. Mr. Finley, don't forget to state your address.
My name's Tom Finley, fourteen oh seven Scooby Ridge, Jeffersonville, Indiana. I'd like to reiterate a lot of things that they said. I'm a parent of a senior at Jeffersonville High School who's played football for four years. With the facilities that we have currently, unfortunately, they're thirty years, forty years ago they've been built. I'm not trying to compare them to other facilities because I think I just wanted to reiterate that it is about the kids, it's about giving them the opportunity and a fair chance to compete at the same level as all these other schools. I have lots of friends from Northern Indiana, come to Jeffersonville. They're like, are you kidding me? The weight room, the locker rooms, the field conditions, the bleachers, unfortunately, it's embarrassing for me to fight friends. And I hate to do that because I love football, I love Jeff, and, you know, my kid's graduating, so I'm looking at all these kids back here and saying, this is for these guys, not for my son. That way I can come and see a corporation that cares about these kids, cares about the individuals and the way they are going to progress and grow, not only as a student, as an athlete, and, you know, as a young man or a young woman, or, you know, the band will be able to, you know, be able to go on the field without falling in a hole or something. You know, or we have too much rain, we can't practice on the field. The consistency of the field, the field condition is priority when it comes to football, whether it's finding your landmarks for the band or whatever it is, is crucial. I asked my son, I said, what's the biggest difference between grass and turf? He said, conditions. He said, you know, grass, you slip, you fall, whatever it is, you know, it is the opportunity for these kids to have a consistent playing field and a consistent map out with everything, everybody else in the, in the same district. Small school, big school, whatever, they have turf. They go from grass to go play on turf. It's, it's different, different conditions. But I really look forward to seeing what you guys do on this. There are a lot of kids here from Charlestown, a lot of kids from Jeff. I'll make sure that, you know, these kids don't get disappointed.
Next speaker is Mr. Daniel Thomas.
Sorry, I'm a little bit out of the weather. My name is Daniel Thomas. I stay at four six zero four Meadow Springs Drive, Jeffersonville, Indiana. I have been at Jeffersonville for high school for nine years. I'm the head athletic trainer there. I agree with voting yes for this referendum for new facilities. My take on it is, like a lot of people have said up here, is it's a level playing field across the board. Like, if you go upstate or go somewhere and you see a field that's unlevel, that's unfavorable conditions for our athletes out there. And that puts us in a bind because that promotes more injuries. So I just think it's leveled. The cost of it, I know it's a big hit off the top, but in ten years, it's going to pay for itself. Without, if you're thinking that, going to body care, pesticide, all the maintenance work that you have to do with grass field, our grass fields are very kept good because our maintenance guys put in a lot of work. And I know they put in a lot of hours because I see them working. I say they're as much as I am. So I disagree with everybody. I think it'll be beneficial for our kids coming up. If we're going to compete against Ford, against Warren, against all the schools that are projected to be a little bit bigger, you know, that they think that a little bit bigger is better than us, we need something that gives the kids a little bit drive to want to compete against them. I'm not saying that they don't. It's just like, if we got nice facilities, if you walk into a nice facility, you're like, man, this is, this is cool. I could work with this. I'm going to go over there and get some work done. So I just think like, because I mean, I've been all over the state. I've been at Jeff for nine years. I've been at Warren Central on down and Warren Central on up. I got, I got a ring with Chad when he was with the girls' coach, so I'm working with Chad. So when you go to those bigger powerhouse schools and you walk in and you see that, or you see that field, you're like, ew, this is, this is legit. This is legit. And then you walk in that weight room and it's like, real good, laid out, perfect. Kind of like, man, we missing this in Jeff. We kind of need this to help us out. But I also think we put a lot of money and a lot of time towards our education and education is a key across the board. Don't get me wrong. I got my school paid for for athletics, but it also got me an education. And I can't take that education away. We're, we are a Grammy Award-winning school. We are arts at Jeff. I don't want to take that, that Grammy Award-winning arts and make it like, hey, we're a powerhouse at the bottom of the state. And that's, that's my thought.
Our last speaker tonight is Mike Adams. Please try to state your address. I always say that because it's awkward if you don't and we're like, will we stop you and...
My name is Mike Adams. I live at fifty-five twenty feet of Montone Drive in Jeffersonville. Mr. Lofner, Cabinet, Board members. Foremost, I want to thank you for your time this evening and the opportunity to speak. Of course, I've emailed and approached the board several times over the past few years, primarily in support of our open concept building renovations and to appeal for help relative to the charred out of the school pool. Tonight, I come before you again to request that you approve the strategic plan tonight as it relates to our facilities. For far too long, facilities have been the absence of Greater Clark County schools. In two thousand eight, when CHS and JHS were renovated, improvements to the athletic facilities were cut. When the proposed remonstrance failed, improvements to the athletic facilities did too. When the facility study was completed in two thousand fourteen, recommendations that expressed dire concern over certain aspects were thus untouched. GCCS has historically saved money by reusing portions of older buildings such as was done with CHS for the new elementary school in Jeff. That's applauded, but it's time to bring our schools into the twenty-first century. Currently, the football field stands and facilities at CHS and JHS are the same as they were when the schools were constructed. In nearly fifty years, no changes have been made. Following improvements to CHS in oh-eight, the building and under the football stands was condemned. Running water cut off, the building is still used for storage of athletic equipment, which we then asked our kids to handle at halftime. There is no locker room near the field, so players must gather in the trees at halftime. Over the years, I've witnessed players having to relieve themselves in the trees and huddle together in the cold rain. The press box is rotting at the bottom and oftentimes, use of the field must be withheld from various teams to keep from having it torn up. Track and tennis courts have obvious cracks that simply can't be repaired. Of course, the football fields aren't the only facility needing improvement. Middle school pool has been empty for two years now. Students must return to school at five P.M., take a thirty-minute bus ride to New Wash, install lane lines, swim, remove lane lines, take another bus ride, return home at eight thirty P.M., go home, clean up, eat dinner, then do homework until one A.M. High school and middle school programs have dwindled. In Charlestown, this year, our summer program had to be shut down. Three years ago, we went from seventy kids in our summer school program to none this year because we had to send them to other places because they were tired of having to travel. This only highlights a small portion of the needed updates to our facilities. The question, of course, to me is why? The answer is simple. School's business needs to be run accordingly. Like it or not, there's a lot of competition now. See, my time is running out, so I'm not going to get through everything I have to say. But I do want to say that the biggest reason to proceed forward with this approval is simply this. We owe it to our kids. We owe to them to provide moderately reasonable places to play with the benefit of athletics as it pertains to academics. I'm proud of our schools, but being proud is not the same as having pride. Thus, I appeal to you tonight to please give our community something to be proud of, something which says that GCCS does care about all aspects of our students' lives and well-being, and that will have lasting impact.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, those are the last two comments. On agenda items, the next item on the agenda is the approval of consent agenda board number.
First of all, I'm moving to read consent agenda wish.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, if you have questions, comments on the consent agenda.
Harry Nell is in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted. Say a pro, say a aye. Next is gifts to building in the, second time, last second time? Second of the time. She's just going to go. Yeah, I don't know if I'm doing this. We've got time down. Oh, okay, gifts to building for this month is one thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents. And I move that we accept these gifts as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Questions or comments on gifts to building? Harry Nell is in favor of accepting the gifts to building presented by the district. Say a pro, say a aye. Aye, all opposed. We do have several items on the agenda. How do others, please, if you are ready to present, please be ready like a filmmaker. First item on the agenda is the Neola policy. It's a second reading, which does require action.
It does, for good evening. I previously presented this update to the teacher appreciation grant policy for first reading last month. Just got here today asking for adoption for the second reading. As a reminder, Indiana code was recommended this year to allow for a supplemental award to teachers who want to stay in higher years of experience who are rated effective or highly effective. After a discussion with the GCA, incorporation discussion, it was decided that this would not need to be revised for this year. However, we did, I'll leave that option available for subsequent years if we chose to allow for the supplemental award.
Thank you, Ms. filmmaker. Board, do you have a motion?
Ma'am, I would like to approve the teacher appreciation grant.
Thank you, Dr. Frank. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Buck. What are your questions or comments on the teacher appreciation grant update? Thank you. Harry Nell is in favor of accepting the teacher appreciation grant update. Finally, I'll just talk by saying aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you. Next is health insurance renewal fund for twenty, renewal for twenty twenty.
Thank you. Greater Clark County School Corporation annually reviews group health insurance. MJ Group, our new GCCS insurance consultant, presented renewal proposals to our insurance committee. And I would like to take some time to thank the insurance committee and their time that they spent adopting these proposals. We had three teacher representatives, Mr. Fixler, Mr. Felix, and Mr. Reese. Our superintendent, Mr. Walker, CFO, Dr. Michael, myself, our director of HR, and also our board number, Mr. Perkins. We met over ten, twelve hours in multiple meetings to review the proposals that were presented to us from MJ Group, review data, and determine what was in everybody's best interest here with the corporation and our self-insurance. It was determined that after a review of proposals from ANP and UMR, that ANP was the better network provider, while health insurance was designed based on their quote under benefits. The insurance premiums will be increased by twelve percent. This twelve percent is split with Greater Clark Corporation being sixty percent and the employee being forty percent on that twelve percent increase. And those new rates were attached to the new entry for you. This twelve percent is expected to cover the total forecasted budget for the upcoming twenty twenty calendar year, which includes expected claims, medical costs, and prescription payment. This increase will also budget for a cash reserve, which is direly needed for self-insurance fund, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Had we remained with the mandatory increase that we would have seen to cover our forecasted budget, the cash reserve would have been thirty-two percent. At this time, I'm asking that we're to approve our health insurance premiums for companies with ANP fully valued or twenty.
Do you have a motion?
Ma'am, first.
Will you?
Ma'am, President, I recommend that we approve the GCCS health insurance with ANP. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. What are your questions or comments on new health insurance? I served on the committee as soon as you said, and I continue that. The teachers that served on the committee were, we took this very seriously, the teachers and administrators took it very seriously. I think, I think you do all right, thank you. And I appreciate all the teachers out there. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Thank you, those of you that served on the committee. Any other questions or comments? All opposed for being the health insurance with ANP. Say a pro, say a aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Next is the dental insurance.
Yes, for our insurance committee, also met with our insurance consultants to review our options for dental insurance renewal. After reviewing proposals from Delta Dental and ANP, our recommendation is that we move to ANP for our Delta dental insurance. The Delta insurance premiums will decrease, albeit very immediately, but those premiums are also provided on the tax sheet. And these rates are guaranteed for two years. The dental plan is voluntary claims easily to pick up all three names.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Do you have a motion?
I'm moved to accept the ANP dental insurance for twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Would you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Questions, comments? Thank you. Harry Nell is in favor of adopting the dental insurance, uh, or ANP, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And vision insurance for twenty twenty.
Yes, for finally, our vision insurance. In the past, our vision has been bundled with our medical. And at this time, our insurance option is for the vision to be sealed out. So it is still a voluntary program. However, because this will be an additional cost on top of the medical rates going up, insurance committee has recommended that Greater Clark be up sixty percent of the vision premiums, with employees being up forty percent. The voluntary vision will, benefits will remain the same as we've seen before as the dental pool as well, the medical, I forgot to mention that. So our employees will not see any changes as far as deductible or coverage limits. We're asking approval on our vision insurance with ANP as well, so all three lines of coverage will be included in the next calendar year.
Would you have a motion?
I'm moved to approve that we, I'm sorry, I'm moved to approve vision insurance with ANP for twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. What are your questions or comments on this?
I just have a comment. I had several questions off the help dental and vision. That's what I did for twenty-two years. And April, I just wanted to thank you for finding the answers, calling me back, and being responsive. I appreciate that.
Okay, there's going to be other questions, comment? All opposed for accepting ANP as our vision insurance provider for twenty twenty. Say a pro, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Next on the, on the agenda is the strategic plan and year one of the facility plan.
Thank you, Board. First of all, let me say thanks to all of you for coming to the meeting tonight. And I also want to say that, or explain in scope what we're trying to do with this part of the action item. You know, we've spent a lot of time the last five or six months developing a strategic plan that we could take out to our communities, which we did last week. We had great turnout at each of those events, great feedback, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, we listened to that feedback. And I'll share some slight changes that we made in the strategic plan with you in a second. But tonight, with this part of the action item, I want to make sure that, Board, you understand that I'm just asking you to approve the broad scope of what's in the plan, except for year one of the facility plan. I will go into that and some other action items. I'm going to ask you to take action on those because there's, you know, timeline's important there in terms of getting moving on, on those projects. But within the strategic plan that I'm bringing to you tonight, I'm asking you to approve it in broad scope. Obviously, we're going to come back to you later after we get specific detailed plans on what we're doing with the preschool, you know, the potential buyout of teachers and those type items. Because obviously, we want to bring those back individually, make sure we communicate to the Board and ask you guys to approve those items. I do want to mention that, based on the feedback we got last week and one over the last couple of weeks, there's a couple of things that we amended or changed within the strategic plan. One was that we're going to delay doing anything with the restructure of the related arts programs at the elementary level. We're going to delay that at least for a month, maybe two months. We want to study that a little more. We want to get more research on that, and then we'll make a decision at a later date. And I promise to, my promise to everyone in this room is we'll be very open and transparent about that, you know, moving forward. But we do feel like we want to delay that. We want to get more information, more research before we make a decision or before I ask the Board to make a decision on that. So that's one change within the strategic plan. The second item was on the River Valley Pool. The second item was on the River Valley Pool. We've decided to keep the River Valley Middle School Pool open until it needs any major repairs. At that time, we will reassess the situation when those major repairs are needed. And then, to be honest with you, based on the feedback we got, we're going to take a hard look at, you know, potentially, could we do something to Jeff High at that point in terms of a major pool renovation? If that's three, four, five years down the road. So those two things have been changed. I do ask the Board to approve this strategic plan in broad scope, so that we can get moving forward on really fine tuning the details of those plans that we want to bring forward later as action items and get into place for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Plaken. Do you have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the strategic plan, year one, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Plaken. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Plaken. Questions or comments?
First of all, I want to thank everyone for your comments. And I feel very strong in that with Mr. Lautner, looking at these situations, from 1971 to, let's say, school year 2020, Jeff High School would be 49 years old. We need to do work. To sit here and say that, well, we can afford, we can afford to do what we want. And we, I support improving our athletic facilities. And the reason is, like one person said, when I was driving through Lawrenceburg and I looked at the track and the football field, I was amazed. And I know they get money from the Cameron Bowl, but still, our kids deserve to have the same opportunity, equal facilities, education as it's anyone else. So I stand supporting for the future to improve and not to just lag behind where we waited too long. And whatever we need to do to look at finances, I know some school corporations are charging, and we haven't been charging. We've been giving a lot away, but we're at a point now that unless you contact the mayor, the legislators for these district districts to move on 15%, give us $2.5 million a year, we're going to be always on an out of bond issue. So it's up to the community. What happens here today, we need to move forward. We need to let someone else hear the voice. There's nothing we can do. The legislature says shay. Doesn't say that they have to give us anything. So we need to contact those legislators and say, hey, we want our portion of tax dollars. That's all I understand.
Just a comment. I've been on the Board 11 years, and I got more public comments and emails about this strategic plan than I have had on any other subject in my career. So I want to thank you, public, for reaching out to us and trusting us and your board to listen. We took your feedback, we went back to Mr. Lautner, and he listened to you and for it. And that's how some of these changes are kind of about. The big three were the related arts proposal, the swim facility at River Valley, and the pre-K. We are resolving the River Valley Swim Facility and the related arts proposal in the plan. I do encourage us to continue looking at the pre-K, and especially, I don't want to see anybody, any kid, have to be blessed. That's, that would be very difficult for me to say yes to. I recognize pre-K is absolutely... The state should just flat out be paid for it, because it's early learning and it helps kids for the rest of their career, but they don't right now. So just encourage us to continue looking at how we can keep our kids from getting blessed in the pre-K program. But thank you, Mr. Lautner, for listening. I appreciate it, and I know I will appreciate it.
I'd like to add to that. I've been on the Board not as long as you asked, but I've been on for seven years. And again, this, and I went through the whole closing with Maple and Spring Hill and, you know, all that, and I represent downtown. But this is the most that I, this strategic plan, I got more emails and more phone calls, more visits than any other issue. And again, as Christina said, it's made a difference, and I really appreciate the fact that I was able to hear your voice and what concerns you about this. Because I changed my mind based on some of this feedback. And the, thank you, Mr. Lautner, for inviting us and having us at those meetings where we got to listen to the publics, even though I went to Jeff High, I went to 115. And the last thing I'd like to say is, well, a couple things. I think Greater, I worked in another school corporation for four years, and I think Greater Part has, I think this gentleman right here said, we got it going on, and we need to make sure that we provide an unperpassed education for all of our kids, and it includes our athletic facilities and everything. But the thing that you said, sir, about this is like a business, we have to sell ourselves, that is so true to me. I mean, if you can pay your kid and go to another school corporation because you think it's better, that just, you saw how much money each student runs in. So thank you for that comment, and I thank all of you for coming tonight and coming to that meeting at Jeff High, I went to 115.
I just want to thank the gentleman that came out, his child was graduating this year. He came out to support that. And that's kind of hard, I think, you know, the corner that we're turning, or maybe we've been, we've already turned, you know, we're pivoting and moving in another direction. It's awesome to see these athletes here. You know, if you go, I'm in a lot of schools in the state. It's not like, like, there's Wayne Township, Pike Township, Ben Davis High School, the university exploded right there. And it is like a very small college. You know, it's huge. So I'm not saying that that's everything in the world, but there is a point where being proud of your facilities and taking it to that next level, you know, when kids run out there and feel really strong about the support they have, it's obvious from the parents that we've heard from. And I've been on the Board 10 months, and this is the most I've heard about from anybody else. But I thank you very much for that. So we should keep moving forward, and, you know, growth comes sometimes with conflict. And I just appreciate the heck out of you all, you know, putting your comments out there and stuff like that.
I know I haven't responded to a lot of emails, but I promise I will respond to everyone after tonight. Anything else? All those in favor of approving the strategic plan and year one of the facility plan, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. I'm going to get interested in the strategic plan. The next one I wanted to do is letter engagement.
Yes. Board, I'm asking the Board to approve a letter of engagement with Stiefel, who will be, they will be our underwriting bond municipal securities team. This allows us to engage and discuss with them about future bonding as we go down the road with our financial, or our facility plan. I'm asking the Board to approve this engagement by Dr. Stiefel.
All right. Any motion? Any of us?
I move to approve the letter of engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Plaken. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Do you have questions or comments? Great. Hearing that, all of those that approved the letter of engagement with Stiefel, Mr. Lautner presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All those that are opposed? Thank you. Next one is the financial team.
I recommend to the Board the approval of our financial team as we move forward with potential bonding. That team would be made up of Stiefel, also Piper Jaffrey, David Wimmer, and also Thomas Peterson, who will be the bond counsel. On the first two projects in the facility plan in terms of transportation, facility and the swim pool at Charlestown Middle School, Stiefel will be the lead underwriter, and Dave Wimmer and Piper Jaffrey will be the co-underwriter in this model. After those two projects, then Stiefel will be the lead underwriter for the rest of the project. We feel good about this team. We're really taking a different approach to how we get things done in this district. And that approach is really trying to manage the tax rate. You know, I talked in the community meetings quite a bit about trying to keep the tax rate at $1.10, which would allow us to get a lot of things done because of what you saw in Dr. Dyke's presentation in terms of the assessed value going up. And we're at, you know, with the interest rates where they're at right now, the assessed value, assessed value going up right now, there's a lot of things that we can get accomplished without a negative impact on the taxpayer. And I think this team will help us, help provide us support and the services we need to make sure that we manage that tax rate well, and we don't negatively impact the taxpayer. So I'm asking the Board to approve that financial team.
Thank you, Mr. Lautner. Do you have a motion?
I have a question. I move to approve that we approve the financial team since Mr. Lautner.
Thank you, Mr. Lautner. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Plaken. Questions or comments about financial team? Hearing that, all those in favor of approving the financial team presented by Mr. Lautner, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Next item on the agenda is authorization of bond.
Yes. Within the strategic plan is the year one of the facility plan. We, like I said, we, you know, went to all the community meetings last week, got a lot of feedback, feel good about what we're trying to do with year one of this facility plan. We think it impacts all of our communities very well. We think that, you know, we'll be able to get a lot of done in terms of improvements. And not only the necessary improvements, but also they'll benefit our student athletes, also our transportation department. They'll benefit many different schools in terms of just the environment within those schools. So I ask the Board for approval of bonding for year one of the facility plan as presented.
Thank you, Board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve authorization bond.
Thank you, Dr. Plaken. Do you have a second? Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
May, could we put those, did we put that up there?
Do you want to read the freedom?
No, I just, I just thought it would be nicer. Strategic plan, I have.
It's in the strategic.
Yes. Go down.
About slide 32.
Slide 32.
As you can tell, the community meetings, it's a long slideshow. So just to say, the area highlighted is actually some changes that we made based on the feedback we got from our community meetings, especially New Washington, in terms of the sound system that is the original sound system in their cafeteria auditorium out there, so we added that. Like I said, we tried to really listen to what our community had to say and what they wanted, and what are their priorities. And we feel good about, you know, this plan, we feel good, it's going to make a very significant impact to our schools. And I truly believe what a couple of people on the speakers said is that it will impact our, you know, we're making a commitment to our students. And so I ask the Board to approve year one of the facility plan and the bonding of that.
Thank you, Mr. Lautner. Do you have a message?
Madam President?
Yes.
A, I have a lot of work to do. And B, we will be reporting to the Board again on October 15th to primarily review proof documents, and then back to the public hearing on November 19th. So those will be the next few times, which will then bring the entire project together.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Do you have any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Perkins, for asking. We did. Dr. Plaken made the motion, it's not, or Tracy seconded.
As you can see up here, or you can see up there, there's $2 million in football fields that are being asked to be bonded out. And I did a lot of research on this. I'm in construction, some of you know, I know I have some context in the business. I went back and forth on this a couple of different times. At first, I was, first I thought I was going to say yes, no questions asked. I started looking at the data out there, digging into the internet, and I realized that there are some, there are opposing visions on this as well. One of the, one of the things I did find out very quickly was that there are two very highly competitive organizations of groups of people, groups of working companies, that are, one on one side, they want grass fields because that's what they sell, that's what they service, and the other on the other side wants turf fields. Trying to make some kind of a middle ground between those was nearly impossible because they're both so focused on what they want. Therefore, it was very difficult to be able to come to any kind of conclusion with that information. I finally contacted a company called Civil Design Incorporated that does design these fields, both grass and turf. And they indicated that there are advantages to grass, but there are also advantages to turf. Grass fields may cost less in initial investment, there's no doubt about it. I'm going to hear from some of my constituents about that. But the bottom line is, to be properly designed as a grass field, it needs to drainage under the field, the same thing that the turf fields have to have. And without that, you still have a long leak time whenever you have a wet condition with your turf, with your grass field. Therefore, the initial cost between grass and turf reduces dramatically from what you may see on the internet. Second thing is, the turf fields do allow us to get on the fields much faster, they allow us to use them in a, in a much more intense manner. Many times, the grass fields, even whenever they're properly done, properly drained out, you're still only going to be using them once, one time a week, or otherwise you'll be damaging the field. Therefore, the turf allows us to put a band on it so they can practice. Ms. Hutchinson and I both ended up practicing on, I think I know where you did, I did on Parkview's East Parkin Block. Mr. Davis used to drive us, he was, he used to be a marine drill instructor, he had little patience with us being out there on the hot asphalt field. The second thing is that the grass takes nearly a year to be able to develop properly. It has to grow, it has to be able to mature, and it has to be brought to, brought to maturation before you can put people on and start playing. That would put our fields out of use for one year, and I don't think that's a very good thing for us to have. Last issue, Mr. Lautner brought up, that whenever we go in, so many of these things, if you see up, saw up there, are safety related. Absolutely, we have to do it. We have buildings that are condemned, we have buildings that are bleachers that are unsafe, and we have a lot of things up there that are going to be done that are implied by the safety that we have to provide for the buildings, the heat, air conditioning, humidity control, things like that. For us to do the safety related issues on these two fields and not do the fields, not do the turf fields, is ridiculous, it's counterproductive, conscious wise. We have in my business what's called as general conditions, that's the cost, the cost to manage the project, oversee the project, provide everything for it. You're going to have that on any project you do. If you do bleachers one year, you do the press boxes and those stuff another year, there's a second set of general conditions, you do the turf fields a third time, there's three sets of general conditions, which can run anywhere between 15% to 30% of the project. That's the savings that we recognize if we bundle these all together, which is what Mr. Lautner wants us to do. And therefore, that's the reason why, I'm going to get a supply about this, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this and pass, pass along my approval on this.
Thank you, Father, for buckling and saving. Next time, set the timer. Next time, we'll set the timer. Three minutes. Go on, stick your name in there. I did go back and forth on the turf. When he said the March of Major, I was like, I'm sold. No. But thank you, and we do really appreciate you actively. It was very positive and very supportive, even if it was opposition.
All right. Any last comments, questions on the bond? That's what we're still on, right? All those in favor of authorizing, I think, bond for the year one of the facility plan is presented. as presented, probably saying aye. All those opposed. All right, Dr. Plank has the next couple one, less words is better, go.
All right. Hey, you know that time. We'd like to add workers' compensation to our office clinic, which will allow our employees to have to go to the clinic, it will be rated of injuries. When the clinic is open, currently our employees live at O M B in Munchville, and if O M B is closed and they go to the Martin Morris Hospital, which is higher charge for emergency care. With the variable hours, our clinic offers, it's feasible for our employees to go to the clinic as much as possible, and if the clinic is closed, it would also start through our hospital services. The savings would be on the doctor's charge since we are already paying Dr. Jordan and Eric, who's our new practitioner, but the clinic will send us an invoice for any, as soon as any live work that is done. These charges would then go to the fund that an employee is charged to instead of being paid out of our signed insurance fund, which is our employees' help. So we're asking permission to amend the contract with the balance for life and workers' comp triage to the contract. Last year, just as an example, we paid out over $10,000 for work and account injuries a year ago, about $230,000. So there could be some substantial savings, it just depends on how many people are injured in the first year. A lot of them are trips, falls, things of that nature, that bikes that can be handled at the clinic, dirty work and hours. So superintendent recommends approval, this one through the insurance committee also. Mrs. Gellner, there is also review of the contract.
Thank you.
Superintendent recommends approval of workers' compensation in addition to the balance for life.
Thank you, Dr. Plank. For Judge, a motion to approve the contract with bonus for life for adding workers' comp triage.
Madam President, I move to accept one of the competition to the bonus comp contract.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goke. Questions, comments?
Just one question for clarification. So by saying they are doing the workers' comp triage, does that include necessary drug testing? So they're going to have to go to a different facility?
Wait, wait, would they do the drug testing?
Like for?
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, that would include. Because they, they have to handle that.
Okay, so for injuries that require drug testing, all that'll be done at the bonus for life clinic? We're not going to have to subcontract out?
During, when the clinic is open, it's allocated to the end.
Thank you.
We need to separate panel, a lot of different price for, there's like a second panel of drug testing.
Dr. Plank, does that cost, that amount that you said, $100,000, $200,000, does that include, for example, if a person was injured in, maybe their insurance gave them $10,000 for the injury, is that inclusive of that or is that separate?
This is just for medical.
Just medical?
Thank you, Dr. Plank. Any other questions or comments?
Did you say we are self insured on the bonus comp? Yes, okay.
Anything else? All those in favor of previous contract with bonus for life, any workers' comp triage, if you're probably saying aye. Aye. All those opposed. Authorization to advertise for architects and engineers for the year one facility plan, less words would be awesome.
We would like to explore, I'm going to skip the first sentence, we would like to explore the possibility of using this type of contract to help to be placed in an efficient equipment such as light, energy, C systems, pumps, et cetera. There's the efficient equipment as a way of reducing our energy costs. These are very advantages to using this program such as getting a large amount of work done quickly, no architect engineer costs, no advertisements, to name a few on the downside, we would be committing to paying them on the energy savings for up to 20 years depending on the length of contract from our operations fund. So we wouldn't see a full reduction.
Yeah, this is the wrong, you're on the wrong page. Yeah. That's 11, sorry, we're on 10, S, because there were a lot less words than this. It was just like two sentences, and then you were talking. Yeah. I know, that's okay, you're super excited about that, it's cool.
Authorization to advertise for architects and engineers for the year one. The administration is requesting permission to advertise for architect and for engineers for the year one of the facility plan, for projects that go over $150,000, which the turf law says we have to bid, and if we have to bid, then we can have an architect and engineers to run us. So we are requesting permission to advertise for architects and engineers and we bring the recommendations to the board and later take your approval.
Thank you.
First, all of them.
For Judge, a motion to authorize advertisement of, in architects and engineers for the year one facility plan.
I make, Madam President, I move that we advertise for architects and engineers for year one facility plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, Mr. Hart, questions, comments?
Another question. Whenever we advertise, it's going to be an advertisement for all this bundle at one time, or we're going to be able to differentiate between different architecture engineering firms for different projects?
It'll have to be, it'll be as one, but then they can pick and choose, so we're going to see what's the advantage. Can one person handle it off? I don't know, I don't think so.
I would say right now that I see that they can.
Oh, I would think so.
Because we have too many things like football fields, an architecture firm cannot handle that.
Correct.
They're going to have to subcontract it out. We'd be better off, it'd be better, it'd be better served if we'd be able to break this up some.
Same thing with this one.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Board. All those in favor of authorizing to advertise for architects and engineers for the year one facility plan, probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And now, we're pretty much all the way through this one. Authorization to advertise for guaranteed energy savings qualifications.
So on the downside, we've committed to paying them for the energy savings for up to 20 years from our operations fund, so we wouldn't really see the full reduction in this fund. One new way is still to issue a bond, pay the energy contractor so that the energy reduction is seen 100 percent in the operations fund and repay the country for debt service fund, but the tax rate will increase, that's the downside. Since this would be our first time using a guaranteed energy savings contract, we'd like to explore all avenues of financing for this project and then make a recommendation in future work. So what this is, is we're asking for qualifications. There's about 12, 13 companies that are certified by the state of Indiana that is using energy savings contractors. So we've, I've sent the request for proposals or qualifications to Bill and John, ask them to look at it, they can be very put back. And then we've done some changes to it, we lowered it, because the first time we did it, that was one state, one county, we pretty sure we had advertised. One of the conditions was you had to have 20 years of experience in guaranteed energy savings. That eliminated a whole bunch of companies that are out there. So we lowered it to five years, we added more things in there like, how many times did you issue guaranteed energy savings, how much did you pay, things of that nature. Do you have any pending lawsuits against you, things of that. So this will give us a list of companies that can qualify, we'll analyze it, then we'll come back to the board and we'll say, yeah, we'll actually, yeah, we may go ahead with this guaranteed energy savings. It may be something we may want to look into for changing lights and HVAC and pumps and motors and, you know, the drivers, things of that nature. Try it for one time, maybe not for 10 years, something of that nature, or go by an issue and go with the same light. I'm always interested in new things.
Thank you, Dr. Plank.
I'm sorry.
That's, there were a lot of words, that's okay, I understand. Don't understand, no, I'm just kidding. Board, any questions?
I'm Chair, I move to approve the authorization to advertise for guaranteed energy savings.
Thank you, Dr. Plank, do a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, questions, comments?
Couple of questions. How, you know, we've talked about this a few times, and I've also talked to April about it, I still do not understand why we are doing an RFQ when we already know there are about 12 companies in the state of Indiana who are qualified, why are we not doing an RFP?
Okay, the request for qualifications is we're just trying to narrow this field down to one company that we want to talk to, then we will show them the amount of work that we want to get done. If we did an RFP, that means you're going to go, you're going to go ahead and just do like a regular bid, just have them come in and bid. But you're, the way the law reads, Bill, help me here.
The way I, the way I understand it, and the way I know that one company is already volunteered to come in and do, they have to go through our entire campus, look at everything to be able to come up with what they think they can do. Different, like, different companies are coming with different sets of schools of work that they have to perform, that they feel that they want to perform for us, which means they invest a lot of time and effort into those, into those qualification forms that they come up with. Then after they do that, then they come back and they present a proposal for what they want us to do. The way I took this, and tell me if I'm wrong, this is very, what you're asking us to do now is very similar to what happened whenever we chose between Core, Charmin, and the other company for design build projects. Is that, would that be ever?
That would be a good way of doing it, because they did spend a lot of time going through the drawings and meeting with us. It'd be the same way, I mean, they ask six or eight companies to come in, give us a proposal, and they're going to spend hundreds, thousands of hours going through our schools, looking at our facilities, and then they're not going to get anything for it. So this is the way that the law reads, that we have to do requests for qualifications, and then from there we pick one company, we sit down, we give them the scope of work that we want to look at, say we just want to let it go, change all the lights, air, T H, we do how it is, give us a proposal, that way they know what the scope of work is.
You just said the law says we have to do this.
The law says that we have to do a request for qualifications.
I guess my problem is, we're looking at one company to have no comparison, because we select one company, they can give us any amount, we have nothing to gauge that on. So I can understand, I don't care how much time they've put in, if they want the job, the neighbors, they come in, give it, and then we look at the best we want.
Well, why can't we have one company come in and evaluate and then do a bid proposal based on?
Because, because everybody doesn't see the same thing.
We also have to pay it with a proposal.
Right, but then we're not locked into one company being able to charge us whatever they want.
I'm very uncomfortable with, I'm having a hard time understanding how this is advantageous for us. If we are, if we just narrow it down to one company, them telling us what we need to do, I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding how that is advantageous for us as far as getting the best person to have the price.
I think they get the best person to have the best price, they, they're, then they're neutral. So they, they shop out, they come in, they look at things, the scope of work, things that need to be done, and then they go out and do what they feel like is the best, then to complete those tasks, and then they bring that back to us.
I still don't like that.
I know they can, the savings, that's the thing, if they make a mistake, they pay for mistake.
Well, it's fine understanding, it's great, nothing in the RFQ is fine. You know, that we're just getting qualifications from different companies that could potentially come in and do energy savings for greater part, you know, and we're not bound to anything by doing the RFQ, you know, now once you give them the RFP, you know, you're getting to a different ballpark, but, you know, these companies just come in, you know, it allows, it's almost like letter engagement to some extent, too, it allows them to come in to look at our facilities and get an idea of what kind of savings is there.
Why would they spend their time, though, like Bill said, why would they invest lots of time, which is money, into doing something if we're not bound to, to business school that, I mean?
They're not. What we're looking at is whether we want to buy, whether we want to buy a new car from Sam's Brain Surgery and use car lot over here, or whether we want to buy a new car from Coles and Blay, who's more qualified?
Well, we already know that, they state qualifications.
The difference between an RFQ and a totally, RFQ doesn't always precede an RFP, they can. And just from the research I've been doing here, a lot of government agencies put out RFQs because you're basically pre-screening companies before you ask them to work. So you're getting, you're narrowing the companies down, and maybe we don't narrow it down to one, you know, I don't know, because you said, you know, there's 12 out there, you want to narrow it down, so maybe we don't narrow it down to one, but an RFQ is very common, you know, things that generate, just narrow focus.
I don't have a problem with the RFQ, the problem I have is letting one person opinion versus someone else. I mean, if we're in this circle and someone's in the middle, we're looking at a different perspective, we don't see the same thing. So they could miss something and come back and say, well, you know, I really missed that. Now, generally, we pay for that, you know, all those areas that we have seen in the past, we pay for that. So I'm just saying, I'd rather see one, two, three people come in there and, and do a study if they want, if they want the job.
Well, I think that's what this is, it is a study, and it's, it's a study that we don't pay for, and they're going to bring it to us, and yes, they're going to put hours in it, but they also don't go in, it's the way the process goes. And if they, you know, they've got us to go out and search the best vendors, they've also got to guarantee the work that comes in, that's the part that I would study on is if, if they make a mistake, it's something they bid, they pay, they pay for. Yeah, if they tell us that it's going to save us $100,000 a year, and if it doesn't, then they pay the difference.
Correct. And there's no change orders.
And there are no change orders, and that's what they thought. An RFQ means nothing more than they're going to come in and tell us what they can do.
How do they make money?
Because they're really good at what they do, and so they.
I mean, seriously, how is this company?
Well, they're, companies like this are huge, and so they're not just working with private private schools, they're national, so for them to say, we're going to buy, you know, so many commercial LED lights, I mean, they're buying.
There's no one company here.
Right, exactly, but there's, there's a bunch, yeah, there's a bunch of these.
They just search for company.
Here's how they, here's how they make their money, okay?
I'm trying to understand.
Under, under the energy, energy savings contract, they want a long-term commitment from the school, or from the owner, so they want a 20-year commitment. So if they're going to say, we're going to invest, say, $10 million, you're going to pay me $500,000 a year for the next 20 years or whatever it comes out to, that's how they're going to make their money, because there's going to be a market on it, there's going to be interest charged on that. And that's what I don't like about it, because you're committing, your operations fund, the savings, you're going to say, say, $500,000, or maybe $450,000 goes to pay them over the next 20 years, I'm only seeing a reduction of $50,000 a year in my operations fund. If I did, like a normal way, did a bond issue, yeah, tax rate goes up, but I could pay it off in three years, or five years, or seven years. If you're doing electrical, energy, your payback should be between five and seven years, I'd go as high as 10. You go off 20 years on a payback, that's ridiculous. I mean, by 20 years, who knows, LEDs will be out the door, and we'll have something to do.
So this is just a reset, this is just to authorize advertising to research.
To research a company, we may not go with it, we may not go the whole way.
We may choose to find companies that.
The advantage of going with one of these companies is you don't hire an architect or engineer, that's their responsibility, just like it was when we didn't design and build. We didn't hire an architect or engineer, we had Jamie Blake and Tom Durkin as advisors because they have to, they have that, but they have to hold, but they always brought in an architect into the, to the meeting, all the meetings that we had to do. So that's, that's a savings, I mean, you're looking at a big amount of money. I'm intrigued by it, but I'd like to start small, do a small project, see how it works.
All we're asking now, right, is to research these companies and look at them for, they're all qualified, we assume, perhaps how long they've been in business, like you said, have they, have they missed any of their, their deadlines, their, their budgets, did they have any pending lawsuits? So we're okay doing that, that research on these companies.
But, now I want to, I want to bring up one other thing that is really bothering me. It's my understanding that one of these companies who may be putting in on this helped to design our qualification questions. You know, I think maybe they possibly could have designed the questions to, so things they want.
Have we asked the question?
As qualified, we altered them because it was too restrictive, I mean, Mr. Hart and myself, Todd Gibbons, we all had gotten emails from proposed vendors, like, yeah, guaranteed energy savings contract, saying, I can't give, or I can't give you a proposal because it's too restrictive, and one of the things was 20 years of experience, so we lowered it a bit.
Tom, will you walk me through or walk us through, we've also been through this tonight, okay? What start, what happens?
Then we put an ad in the newspaper, give the qualifications, the companies will submit their qualifications based on the RFQ that we submit, that we publish. Then we analyze it, and then we'll decide what we want to do, if we want to go forward with them, we'll see what we're going to do. Do we wanna go forward with them? We'll see what they're gonna charge, I wanna see how well they hit their marks.
So instead of a request for proposal where they're gonna give us an amount of money saying we can do this for that much money, this process says, here's our qualifications, here's why you should hire us?
Correct. And then we will give them a project or projects we look at, and they come back with numbers for us to analyze.
So we're not narrowing it down to one thing with this, one person, one?
We could, if we want to, but we could narrow it down to two or three and then do a?
But I mean, not the beginning of the process.
Right now, we're looking to see who's?
Okay.
And to be, and to be clear here, we don't have to take the 20-year finance option. We can, we can, we got a cash balance, and we can pay them, we can pay them. If we wanna do half and half, we can do half and half. So it's, it's very flexible. And this, this is approved by the state. It's not something that some big companies are dreaming up. It's been approved for schools. That's, that's the extent of where I'm at.
Well, and one of you mentioned the savings you get on the architectural side, engineering side, because they have those people in-house. The other thing that, you know, where we haven't talked about is, you know, right now, we're currently paying the vendor almost a half million dollars just to control our systems, HVAC systems. You know, and a company like this comes in and controls those systems for you. You know, you're, you're saving that half million dollars a year, you know, immediately. If you go down this road, you know?
They have, they have an incentive to control the systems to save us money because it either puts money in their pocket, or it gives them a percentage whenever we buy, buy it out. It doesn't say what they tell us it's gonna say. They, they eat it. So, I mean, I would go, I think it's worth at least looking at this.
Investigating a little more.
Yeah, and if it turns out that they don't wanna do it, we don't wanna do it. You know, they're gonna put the money, or they're gonna put the time in.
One of the things, I'm sure you've heard of the energy savings contracts. What they would do is they would do everything, including the kitchen sink, to hit their numbers. You know, they would say, okay, you know, these are, say, these are TA lights, and we're gonna go to LEDs, so you know what? LEDs last, say, 100,000 hours versus 10,000 hours. You're not gonna have to change that light bulb as much. So you're gonna save the maintenance guy or the custodian to change an LED light. At $50 an hour over the, you know, one year, that's how many times that he, you know, might not have to change that light bulb. My concern is, you know what, I'm still paying that person $40 a week. Doesn't matter if it's changing that light bulb for sleeping on the floor. I wanna see hard dollar savings in my energy saving. That's why I want savings. And all this other horse blowing that you throw in there, I don't wanna see it. So that's one of the things that we were negotiating. You can say, we want hard dollar savings, we don't want all that other fluffage, but I understand that.
And this, this RFQ does not lock us down to taking all that. It allows us to be able to evaluate on the situation in terms of we want to, but?
All right, I call for a vote. All those in favor of authorizing to advertise for guaranteed energy savings qualifications, because I'm gonna say aye? Aye, all those opposed?
No.
All of us saying? Thank you so much, Dr. White. Thank you, Ward. I just pulled the call for a vote in because we're not happy. I appreciate everybody's questions. I bring over Indiana Testing Incorporated contract, 2019 to '21. Better like seven or?
Like five seconds.
Oh, okay.
We're saving money.
More than a motion?
Small for a vote. I've worked with this company before. They've got a lot of references. They're working with a lot of school corporations down here, and you can read in the bio and in the description that we are saving about $2,050, estimating. We run the same number of drug and alcohol tests that we had on the last average of three. So I would recommend that you approve this contract with ITI. And it's only for our drug and alcohol DOT, drug testing.
Thank you. Board, time motion for approval of Indiana Testing?
Move to approve Indiana Testing by TI.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Questions or comments?
Question. Now, on that $15, is that on just one run, or is that per person when they come down? The way I read it's like they, there's a fee when they come down, just $15?
Yeah, it'll be our four, yeah. So they're also a bag that we, you know, for post-accident or for any of the others, but they'll, they'll run through. But onsite when they come down, it's $15.
Yeah, the other question, you said there wasn't any, it was just DOT, but what our rate was at also included the non-DOT, so it was worth $5 versus?
Yeah, we, we will not use that for non-DOT. Our non-DOT, I think?
But you put it on, yeah, you put it on the form, so you have an ultimate promotion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ward. Thank you.
Oh, wait, I'm not through. That's what you would do for your, your subs, not your sub, but your?
Chauffeurs, bus monitors.
Yeah, you have the ones that are not certified.
They would have a pre-employment drug and alcohol screen. We'd use the clinic now.
But you, but you wouldn't use, you wouldn't make them a part of your regular screening?
They're not.
Just, just one time? Doesn't matter, people do drugs.
Yeah, I, I put my chauffeur something random, yes, chauffeur. Anybody's driving, whether it be in the Ford Escape or activity bus or a school bus, they are in our name.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Any, any other questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the contract to Indiana Testing Incorporated, is there? Is the attached building rate, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed? Thank you. Next is McKenney Vento Grant.
Yes, board, last time I was here, we talked about McKenney Vento asking up hurdles for riding the brand. And if you remember, we wanted to write that grant as a consortium. So we did that. It's a regional grant that we applied for. I'm happy to announce that we did receive $75,000 a year. It's a free-year grant. That's based on the numbers that we anticipate identifying serving that are homeless in not only our district, but we partnered with parts of community school corporation, also Rock Creek and the academy. So those, other entities, we've got numerous partnerships, the biggest is with communities and schools. So it's going to allow us to offer both for and after school tutoring through communities and schools. And it's also gonna offer and give us the opportunity to reimburse ourselves for the cost of transportation.
Thank you. Board, time motion?
Move to approve the McKenney Vento grant.
Thank you, Ms. Gokido, a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Questions or comments on the grant?
Just thanks for looking.
All those in favor of accepting the McKenney Vento grant, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed?
Did it, did it come up?
No, it's fine. I'm sorry. Beforehand. Kessi Headstart Food Service Agreement.
Yes, Headstart's gonna run three portals plus a bridge from us. And we have a year-to-year contract with them to provide breakfast, lunch, snacks. Breakfast is a dollar at the door, my shirts are a dollar seventy-nine. Lunch is $41, my shirts are $31, snacks are $4 snacks, and there's no crunches Friday here. Contract is dated August 1st, 2019, because the reimbursement fees do not come out until after the service is done. The agreement has been reached by Mrs. Young, so we're asking permission to approve the Kessi Food Service Agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Dyke. Board, time motion?
Madam President, move to approve the Kessi Headstart Food Service Agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Questions or comments, board? All those in favor of approving the Kessi Headstart Food Service Agreement, renewals, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed? Thank you. Dr. Daryl, thank you. Thank you for being ready. Dr. Brothers, thank you for being ready. Chad, thank you for being ready. Thank you for all of you being ready. Go Solutions contract.
All right, the next nine are nine, so nine and nine, we'll, we'll stick with us. Okay. And this contract is our annual renewal of our existing contract with Go Solutions to continue to go Medicaid for counseling, transportation, OTPT, and speech. This is a continuation of services without changes. The cost will be paid out of federal dollars.
Thank you, Director Hartlidge. Board, time motion?
Chair, move to approve the Go Solutions contract.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Thank you, Ms. Walter. Questions or comments on the Go Solutions contract? All those in favor of the renewal of the Go Solutions contract, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed? Thank you. Dr. Hartlidge?
The next is, you're, is asking your permission to receive our high-ability grants in the amount of $68,984. The purpose of this grant is to support students identified as high-ability grades K through 12. The grant is sponsored and supported by the Department of Education. Where these funds, the curriculum materials supplies, will be purchased to support high-ability students as well as professional development, presented by IDOE personnel and district teachers to support high-ability students.
Thank you, Board, time motion?
Move to approve the high-ability grant fund.
Thank you, Ms. Walter. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Questions or comments on the high-ability grant, board? All those in favor of accepting the high-ability grant in the sum of $68,984, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed? Next?
We are asking permission to submit the Indiana Early Literacy Intervention Grant. We've received an allocation of $35,284.69. This grant will provide funding to purchase materials, which will provide strategic professional development, work to focus on core literacy instruction and intervention for our early primary grades.
Thank you, Board. I need a motion to approve the submission of this grant.
Move to approve to submit the application for the 2019-2020 Indiana Literacy Early Intervention Grant.
Thank you, Ms. Gokido, a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Questions or comments on the grant? All those in favor of approval and submission of the grant, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed? The School Improvement Plan, that was a superfluous read. I appreciate everyone for that.
As you can imagine, reading all those plans with hundreds of pages, and as they walk the task pursuant to Indiana Code, all public schools, including church schools and state accredited non-public schools, must complete a school improvement plan with input from a committee of individuals interested in the school. The school improvement plans have to be submitted to the Department of Education typically by June 30, but because of the change in our testing this year, they allow us an extension to allow schools to have time to analyze their scores and make adjustments in their plans and goals for the upcoming school year, and these are all due no later than October 11. And this allows schools to reconsider all of their data and make those adjustments.
Thank you. Joe, motion, please?
I would, Chair, move to approve the Indiana School Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I, I can't vote to approve because I didn't get a chance to read through all of them. We just got these Friday.
How will the plans, so it's two-year plan for Maple and Spring Hill, that they'll be opening for Concentual, so how does that work?
They worked collaboratively on their plan, both staffs together. But they have individual plans, but basically their, their goals and the action steps within the bills are very similar. And technically, they're two separate schools. We walk into a platform, new school number in the spring, and then they'll merge, and they'll start all over on their preparation and camp building, is how that works.
Oh, I noticed that Parkview and their action items, so there's like the action item, and there's who's gonna, who's gonna do it, and then there's when it's gonna get done. And I noticed that Parkview, and I was going through, because I remember being in the classroom and thinking, like, who's doing the work? Because if the teacher's doing the work, then the teacher's learning, and if the kids are doing the work, then the kids are learning. So I was going through the action items, see, like, who's doing the work, and it's like administrators, teachers, administrators, teachers. Parkview did have a team parent liaison, which I thought was really cool. And so I know it's in a couple of years that are really challenging schools to think about, like, who is doing the work to improve their schools, whose responsibility is it? And of course, it's teachers and administrators, but what about the parents? You know, what, who's doing, like, why don't the kids, what kids, what is, they have no responsibility in third-party school? Like, that's stuff we're thinking about, except they read their moms on there.
I see this is important.
Yeah, well, it's one of the?
So I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can plan a little better next year? I've never not wrote it on the appropriate plans, but in good conscience, I can.
Any other questions, comments?
I do. Your director of elementary and director of secondary reviewed all these. Did you have to send any plans back to the schools to? We?
It's a minor tweaks that, with different buildings, some of the things, maybe corrections along.
Okay.
Actually, we have a process in place where they all come in, and we sort of review them holistically together. It is, if you look at the plan, it is our data-wise process, which we, as we do school visits, and we meet with our principals and administrators and building leadership teams. We talk about these plans all year long, and certainly if data comes in, they make those adjustments. And then once they're finally due to us, then we divide them up amongst our central office stack. We each review them with a checklist, actually, that was in the folder as well. And we provide feedback to our principals, and then they submit it the second time. And then we provide feedback again to the final step. They were all due to us on Wednesday to be able to upload and should have been completely ready to roll with their new data, because they had to sub-aggregate or disaggregate their data from our new iLearn, which we did not get that back until just recently.
And like, Ms. Gokido, I, I did not review them, and I always review them. Part of that was not a problem, because I didn't have a laptop, so I didn't know how to do that. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't know how to do that. I couldn't do it with my computer kept on note. But I trust Ross' thoroughness on looking at these plans, and I will vote to approve them.
You said you have lots of eyes on them, and I did notice that New Washington and Ohio looked differently than everyone else. I just wanna ask, you said that it was because they really, because they've been doing that data-wise like 100, and that's why there's?
And please know, it is a, a working plan, a plan in progress, because as soon as, you know, we're constantly looking at the learning center problem and the problem in practice. And they do many cycles within the big cycle, and as things get stronger and better, they use their walkthrough data. Those walkthroughs happen with their directors and their leadership teams, when Mark Ghostages it as well. So it's, it shouldn't be just set and sit on a shelf. It should be a constant action plan that we're always striving to be better and looking at ways that we can make improvements for both our students and our teachers as learners.
Well, with all the iLearn issues that we faced this time, the data coming back late, I understand, but I agree that we need more time to be able to review those as, if you can work that out.
And I, and in the past too, we've also gone through phases where we do like a summary format as well. Because it is a lot, try to read through all.
I think one of them had 50 some odd pages.
Any other questions or comments?
I just appreciate you working on a trust, and I know it's a living, breathing document, so.
All right, all those in favor of approving the Indiana School Improvement Plans submitted by each of our schools? And Dr. Hartlidge, superfluous, say aye? Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Title II, Part A, grant fund?
Yes, we are asking for your acceptance of this grant. The purpose of Title II, Part A, is to increase the academic achievement of all students by helping schools and districts improve teacher and physical quality and effectiveness through this federal program. State and local education agencies receive funds on a formula basis. And our grant has been approved in the amount of $355,080.25. These grant monies will cover salaries for certified instructional staff at Thomas Jefferson Elementary, New Washington Elementary, Charlestown Middle School, and Parkview Middle School, who will deliver daily instructional coaching, professional development, on data analysis, academic standards assessment, and rigorous instructional strategies. Part II of that grant is to provide high-quality professional development with expert consultants and conferences to help all students develop the skills essential for academic success through effective instructional practices. We are seeking your approval to accept this grant in the amount of $355,080.25.
Board, can I have a motion, please? Move to accept the Title II, Part A, grant funds. Any questions and discussion?
Yes, the, these grant monies are only for Thomas Jefferson, New Wash, Charles Town, and Parkview.
Yes, because they do not qualify under Title I.
They're not Title I.
Right. And so this funding helps to support their academic improvement coordinator, which qualifies underneath all the guidelines in this law of those schools.
Is Title II the old professional development grant object?
Yes, sir.
I've asked a question before, and you've answered me every time. But to clarify, maybe for some constituents that need to listen to, do these grant funds help to cover some of the costs or maybe do you cover all the costs for professional development and training in relation to what, what your description says here?
Well, it doesn't cover all of our professional development for the district. Well, it doesn't cover all of our professional development for the district, but this particular grant is specifically to be used for that purpose only. And the federal grant dollars are very specific on what you can write them for in the approval. And then they come, you have paperwork all year long of staffing and reporting that has to be done, and they do audits regularly to make sure that what we say we're doing, we're doing. Some of them have to be supplemental to our educational fund, so it needs in addition to. And each one of them is a little bit different.
So when we bring in somebody, if you ask for approval to bring in a consultant that gives us all the class tower with training for our, training for our teachers, this helps or could help to replace some of those costs?
Absolutely. In fact, we have been very careful. We try to cover all of that, our young grant funding. I mean, it doesn't cover all of it, but we did the bulk of it, and the largest expenses we cover through grants for obvious reasons.
And one other thing I'd like our constituents to think about is, as you just mentioned, there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with these. So for us to be able to keep our educators up to, up to speed with the newest data that they need to have, it does cost administrative staff in the administration building, so.
Yes, sir.
It's a point, because people are, the pop, they tell us that, so.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting, or accepting grants or going for grants?
We are accepting these grants.
All in favor of accepting Title II, Part A, Grant Funds, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Say grant.
Okay, again, this is a school improvement grant. So a couple of our schools have received this. This particular grant is for River Valley and Bridge Point. This is a consulting contract with Kathleen Wilson. It is for the purpose of providing PD and coaching specifically to teaching math standards conceptually with both River Valley and Bridge Point. This will consist of four days of onsite professional development at Bridge Point Elementary in River Valley this school year to support the development of conceptual math instructional units and problem-solving tasks in the vertical curriculum lineup. This is an area, when we look at all that data that's in those school improvement plans, this is an area that we struggle with across the state. So the professional development sessions will be a continuation of the work both schools have done through previous trainings as part of the Balanced Math Framework Initiative. They also support our coaches, so that that trips us down to help all of our teachers. The cost of the professional development services is $12,500, which includes a consulting fee of $2,250 per day plus travel expenses. These expenses will be paid from the school improvement grant at each school.
Thank you, Dr. Hartley. Board to have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the SIG grant, the consulting contract with Kathleen Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. White. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Questions or comments, Board?
Does the state provide a list of consultants that meets or qualifies? They used to do that.
They used to, and I think they made the changes constantly.
All right.
Ms. Perkins, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the SIG grant, the consulting contract with Kathleen Wilson, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Title I agreements?
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, you allowed us to apply, and then we received over $1.9 million for our district, and this is part of the red tape that, yes, we have to continue to support and manage throughout the year. We want to receive those dollars in our district, and somebody has to do it, and that's somebody is me. And this is annual renewal agreements for contracted services with our non-pubs. We talked about there's an element of that, that we have to allocate a portion of that to our non-publics and our neglected institutions. So these are contracts that we have to, these are required. The federal government requires us to have these in place in order for them to allow us to have allocated monies. And these are for Sacred Heart Child Place and Our Lady of Providence High School. And all of the, the things that are gonna happen from these contracts are paid out of those title dollars.
Thank you. We're going to motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Title I agreements.
Thank you, Dr. White. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments, Board?
All those in favor of the Title I agreements with our non-public schools, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Agreement with Dewey?
Okay, this agreement is with Dr. Dewey Hensley, and this is to help launch our Leadership Academy. I'm very excited about this opportunity, and I would like to preface this that all of this is being paid for part of the Title II that you just approved. It's covering these expenses as well as our Title IV dollars, which help to support professional development as well as a well-rounded education. And this Leadership Academy will have components aimed to support systems which increase achievement, a professional culture of collaboration, and informed decision-making. The overarching goal is leveraging leadership to change the trajectories of children's lives. The Leadership Academy will focus upon the following initiatives. There is a district delivery planning. Dr. Hensley, I've actually worked with him in the past. He is amazing, has an incredible biography. If you had a chance to look at that, but he will actually work with our academics, as well as Mr. Lofner, to make sure that we are working cohesively in all departments and that we are optimizing these federal dollars to really make a big difference in our work in academics. The second layer of that is to provide professional learning sessions for our leadership teams and our administrators. We've scheduled four times between October and February with time in between to debrief and do focus on some book study material and how those, what implications that work that we do will have upon our schools and our students. And there's four different sessions with different topics. The first one will examine, examine six specific systems that great leaders build to make great schools. Number two and three will really focus on learning intentions and success criteria. We all are working so very hard, but how can we ensure that we are getting the success that we hope to achieve that we've included within our school improvement plans? And then finally, there will be a focus, our last session, we talked a lot about cultural competency, but we know that our students that are living in poverty struggle the most, and they need the most support. So this will specifically focus on creating poverty considerate schools where all students can grow. The final layer will be a consultancy team. We will identify three schools that we feel like need the most support. We will work as a team, not just with district leadership, but we will pull in experts within our other schools and work with three schools to try to help them overcome some of their struggles and challenges. Then the outlay is on a table on the next page. The professional learning sessions, there will be four of those. It'll be at $3,000 each. There will be five district leadership team planning sessions at $1,500 each. And then there will be three full-day consultancy team visits, and those will be at $4,000 each. The total of these expenses is $32,435.65, or $68 cents. All expenses are written into and will be paid out of federal two and federal Title II and Title IV grants to specifically support professional development.
Thank you, Dr. Hartley. Board to have a motion.
Move to accept the agreement with Dr. Hensley and Leadership Academy.
Thank you. Ms. Robalter, do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Questions or comments, Board? All in favor of approving the agreement with Dewey Hensley, the H. Leadership Academy, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Indiana NASP grant application for Jonathan Jennings?
Yes, Board. This is our third school, who is going to extend their opportunities to students in the world of archery, and NASP stands for National Archery in Schools Program. And this is a grant that Jonathan Jennings would like to submit. They've outlined all the different materials that they will need to launch their archery program. The total cost of this package is $3,259. The National Wild Turkey Grant Program will cover $500 of the total cost. With the Indiana NASP grant agreement, the school will end up being responsible for $400 or $500. And they are requesting permission to submit this application in the amount of $2,259.
Thank you, Dr. Hartley. Board to have a motion.
I would press my move. We accept the grant application for Jonathan Jennings.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Do I have a second? Thank you, Leadership. Questions or comments?
No, that wild turkey, it's not wild turkey.
Unfortunately, our archery elementary education. I took the wording off of the quote. I think it's a wild turkey organization.
Federation, yeah, wild turkey.
How does it go again?
I'd like to make one comment. New Washington, as I think everybody here knows, has that, I mean, archery program both in the elementary school and in the high school. The elementary school is very, very, parents are very, very, they circle around it very tightly. The high school, not quite so much, but we're approving that also as the, you know, kids are coming up and moving into the middle school and high school. I think this is an excellent way to be able to get our kids involved in some activities that are possibly outside, also to teach them the sport.
And Parkwood also has it. They kind of, they just, New Washington's lead, and it's been very well-received, and the kids love it. It really, if you ever have an opportunity to go watch some of their practices, it really is pretty cool.
I have one friend in real church with, and their son's autistic, and he is, it's very, it's helped him a tremendous amount.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Any other questions?
All those in favor of approving the Indiana NASP grant application for Jonathan Jennings School? Signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Paul, thank you, Dr. Hartley. Ms. Bauer. Paul, she was the night community common school loan application.
Yes, I have one item on the statement. Thank goodness.
And it was 25, or 23, I'm sorry.
I'm taking permission to apply for the Fall 2019 Common School Loan for Man and the Department of Education in the amount of $1,610,000 to be used for educational technology. The Common School Fund is able to assist school corporations in financing their school building and construction and educational technology programs. We intend to use this funding in order to support the equipment and for technology at Franklin Square Elementary, so all of their desktop computer stations, their active panels, printers, document cameras, all those classrooms in that new building. It would also continue our updating of the classroom interactive light boards to active panels in order to help with that cost savings there. The active panels have a much longer life expectancy than the other active boards that we've been using previously that are anywhere between 10 and 13 years old at this point. It would also allow us to purchase active electronic devices, which are again in their final phase, and then the additional purchase of instructional support computers for our classrooms. So again, this evening, I'm asked for you to approve to apply for the Common School Loan.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Board to have a motion.
Move to approve the Fall 2019 Common School Loan Application.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Questions or comments?
I have a question. You know, all the, I call it TVs and computers, you know, in every building. Do we have the capability from up here to send signals or information to those screens?
We have a monitoring program that we use called Infuro, that we have the ability to remote into all of those.
Okay, I was hoping, I thought that was great, and you could do better.
Teachers can monitor student workstations. We also have a way to remote into all of those devices in order to assist with problems occur as well.
This, this is a loan, is that correct?
Yes.
Does it fit into our debt term? Is that how it's?
Yeah, we do two a year. We do one in the spring, one in the fall, usually for a million dollars or thereabouts. The one in the spring, I think, is the one that we use for the Chromebook.
Chromebooks.
So, yeah, we, we all have that, we do two.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the Fall 2019 Common School Loan Application, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Ms. Bauer.
Thank you.
2020 graduation rate.
Yes, thank you, Board. I'm the. I'd like to recommend to the Board graduation dates for 2020. As you can see, on Friday, June 12th, the Washington Middle High will graduate at 7:00 p.m. Saturday, June 13th, Jeffersonville High School will be 10:00 a.m. And Saturday, June 13th, Charlestown High School will be at 1:00 p.m. I ask the Board to approve those dates.
Thank you, Ms. Lofner. Board to have a motion.
Move to approve 2020 graduation dates.
Thank you. Graduation, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Questions or comments, Board?
All those in favor of approving the graduation dates, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? And last, but not least, the school calendar.
Thank you. The administration is seeking Board approval of balanced calendar model for the 2020-2021 school year. This is based on feedback that we got last spring from staff, and also in our, you know, our goal to try to align our calendar closer to processor, so our students aren't off-school when prostitute session. Within this calendar, we have three building e-learning days on September 8th, 2020, February 15th, 2021, and April 29th, 2021. Two of the e-learning days will include staff professional development. The first teacher day will be Friday, July 24th, and we've made a pledge to our teachers that that's gonna be their day, you know, to do their work, and we're not gonna have meetings, in terms of principals having meetings and things like that. That's their day of getting ready for the school year. Certified staff will have this day to prepare their classrooms. The first student day will be July 29th, 2020. We will set aside the first week of spring break to be used for snow makeup days. However, we want to use as many e-learning days to make up snow days as we can, but if that gets excessive, you know, obviously, if we have a really, really bad winter next year, you know, we're not gonna be excessive in how many e-learning days we use. So we, we may end up using some of those makeup days, that first week of spring break. And obviously, we ask our parents next year not to plan vacations on that first week of spring break. Make sure they plan on the second week of spring break, just in case we have a real bad winter. And the goal here is really, number one, to start school as close as we can to August 1st and end school before Memorial Day. We do not want to add days on after Memorial Day. And that's the goal of this calendar, so I ask the Board to approve this, this calendar for the 2020 and 2021 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Board to have a motion.
Madam Chair, very difficult for me to ask you. I'd like to move that, we approve the 2020-21 school calendar.
Thank you, Dr. White. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Robalter. Questions or comments, Board?
This helps our processor students.
Absolutely. It's almost identical to their calendar.
You mentioned something about advising parents possibly, I mean, Sundays will be in first week. Some of you are speaking of this calendar, right?
Right.
And we, we will be sending that out multiple meetings, because we have some parents that contend they don't own social media, some don't go on email, some don't take their snow mail, I guess some don't.
We'll communicate that as best we can, make sure they know not to plan vacations that first week.
Other questions or comments?
All those in favor of approving the test school calendar for 2020-21 school year? Signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Board. And again, thank you so much for being ready and stepping up there. That would, I really appreciate that. Last one, the United States Public Commons and Mr. Felix.
I won't keep you long. I want to go all the way to City Hall. Board, Mr. Lofner, these things here, first of all, we had a tumultuous couple of weeks with the strategic plan, I know that, and I want to applaud all of you for the hard work you've done. And also, Mr. Lofner, it took a lot of courage to do those four meetings. You got beat up pretty bad on some level. Takes a soldier to do that, but I remember the not-so-distant past, that would never happen. Our superintendent, I don't think, would have listened to the community the way you have, and certainly not his staff, choosing the best path forward. And let me say, really, that's how things are supposed to work. When you're spending the public's money and creating, eliminating jobs, programs. When you're spending the public's money and creating, eliminating jobs, programs, you're supposed to listen. It's our money you're spending. And I'm not exactly sure how this plan's going to change in the future, nor am I entirely going to be in favor of it. I'm sure of that, of what remains. But I must say, as a teacher in this corporation, I am extremely pleased with the process that's got us where we are tonight. The community in those affected have spoken. The Board's listened to everybody. You've listened. But I know you've inherited a very difficult situation. And I think that the Association administration are actually listening to one another. That's very, very important if we're going to succeed. It gives us a chance to make positive change, progress, in other words. We'll progress together. Your transparency, here's the biggest thing. Your transparency and your honesty since your appointment, and Board too, have been what are earning you the respect of your staff and the greater part of the community. In closing, I would also just like to say, Board, you're equally responsible for all this, for hearing this and all that good stuff. And I think we're starting to turn the corner on climate change here. It's important. Our climate needs to be one where people want to work, and I see that and I feel it every day. Now, I do have one point of order, though, before I leave, on the strategic plan. I heard you say that the related arts have been resolved, and then you said something about fraud, spectrum. So I'm still a little bit confused on what's going on with related arts. So a point of order would be a little clarification for these folks. They deserve it. Their lives depend on it. Thank you.
Okay. Last is Board reports or questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Thorpe?
I have to spend several day, two days with some other board members in Indianapolis. So.
No, say goodbye, wasn't it? I'm exhausted. I've been up.
We didn't get back until this afternoon.
I, I thought I would be able to hold up like the whole board meeting, especially when you guys started firing off. Thank you. Thank you for us, Board, for being, Mr. Lofner.
I want to say thank you to the cabinet members for making clear to the public that some of the issues that I, as a public member, used to wonder about, because I see so many dollars spent for travel, so many dollars spent for professional learning. And now, now it's very clear that we are not necessarily taking, we may take some, but we're not taking the majority of that out of tax dollars. We're taking that out of local tax dollars. We're taking that out of money that is available. And our staff and cabinet members have gone way out of their way to try to do the very best they can to obtain as much of those funds, as many of those funds as possible, to help our teachers to be able to improve their skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofner.
I just want to say one thing quickly. We, as we talked, Dr. Knight did a little good job of explaining quite in depth about finances and, you know, I went through a bunch of stuff, and it's very difficult. I know the senior board members have a lot better grasp of it than me as a new person. I do know that I feel like the TIF money cannot just be addressed by us. It needs to be addressed by everyone. And sometimes, if it's the hard thing to do, it's usually the right thing to do. I struggle with that. It's not just state legislators. It's local political officials. And, and we need help with it. And I don't, I don't want to over, you know, extend how I feel about it, but I'm very passionate about it, and I think there's some things that could already be done. We might not be in some of these positions if we've been getting TIF dollars. And we need to get 15% of it, which, you know, we're working together in this community. I think it's important that we really work together and not just talk about it together. I'm sorry, that's all I got to say.
I just had, I just had two items. Dr. Michael, or three, Dr. Michael out at the meetings in Indianapolis. I was curious, this one guy said that for energy, I don't know if it was a Duke rep or whatever, but we don't have to put any money. It won't cost us anything. So I'm going to try to find that information because I would have, let you contact that person, see how we can have, not pay for energy.
That's part of their new solar program.
Okay. It was a solar guy, so you're familiar with that.
Oh, yeah.
Possibly, I haven't been working with it. Okay. They did mention, John, and something about it only costs us a dollar. I don't know if it's weird, but I gather that information. I want, I want to thank the cabinet. Dr. Hartland, I want to thank you for getting these grants and putting all the extra work in and everyone that worked with you. There was one thing that I found very interesting, and that was in a coaching seminar. And around the state, they're trying to change the perception of coaches. And coaches that are for themselves to go on for their careers are the coaches for kids. And what I found interesting is that a person that teaches art, teaches math, English, we allow, they teach a certain way, but our coaches are allowed to say anything to kids that they want to, grab on them, whatever. But we don't tolerate that with very professional teaching. So I felt it very interesting that they're trying to change the climate of how these coaches are dealing with kids and be more kid-oriented. You can get more out of an athlete. You don't have to scream at him. But I think they've done seen Bobby Knights and all of that, the Barry Brines, Woody Hayes, or, you know, that people want to be like that. But then, you have to understand, you may lose your jobs like they did also. But that's all I'm saying.
I just want to say what you heard a little bit tonight, and that is about the TIF money. It's campaign time in our local areas, and so this is the time to ask those questions. If you go to any kind of political events, ask those questions. The more they hear from our people, the more they're going to realize that that could affect whether they're elected or not elected.
And I just think, I think everybody reached out, and I know most of them are gone, and some of them didn't even come. Thank you, Mr. Felix, for what you do, for teachers, and with the relationship with the Board, and Mr. Lofner. We really are listening. This past couple of weeks has been crazy with the strategic plan, but it's good. I think it ended, you know, I mean, it's not ended, it's not over. We still have work to do. But we've been working so hard, like Mrs. Perkins said, we just got back. And, you know, the whole way, we're like, hey, how can we do this? How can we make this work? You know, we're, and we'll, you know, he was there at the conference and everything, swam and hauled over. What about this? What about this? What about this? What about this? And, and so, you know, I wish things were different. And, you know, Mrs. Patrick said she wanted to, she'd like to win the lottery and give us $20 million. So if that happens.
I bet I won the lottery.
So, but anyway, thanks.
Board members, too. We'll give you the numbers. I'll give you the number zeros that Jeffersonville's giving us TIF money.
Thank you, Mr. Lofner.
Well, first of all, thank you all for coming out. Like I said, last week was a long week. I don't think I got home until 11 o'clock each of those nights. But I would do it all over again because I strongly believe that's the way, as Mark said, this process should work. And if I ever get away from that, you need to tell me. I just totally believe that's the way things should work and be open and honest and know that we're not always going to agree on everything, but at least everybody's going to be able to speak their, their ideas and express their opinions. So that was very important to me, that we did that last week. And like I said, we got some excellent feedback on things, not just in the meetings, but in numerous emails that we all have. It was good. In regards to the related arts plan, what we want to do, just to clarify that, is basically spend the next month to two months and study. You know, we're going to dig into that a little deeper. We're going to do more research. I promise you, as the Association president, you know, that we will communicate on that. You know, we'll, we'll, once we get to a point where we feel like we have enough information to proceed forward or not proceed forward, you know, we're going to communicate with you. We're going to be very open and honest about that. Before we ever would decide to bring something to the Board, you know, we're going to sit down with the Association and talk about it. But we, everybody up here felt like we needed to study it a little more.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Patrick. Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for those who stayed. You didn't have to do that. You did.